Good evening, everybody. It is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. It is June 28th. And will everybody stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I love that. That was great, hearing other people besides ourselves say it. So that was nice. Roll call. So Councilwoman Burns has asked to be excused. She has a family function tonight. So I'll begin with Councilwoman Owen.
President.
Councilwoman McGoffin.
President.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Allen.
President.
And Councilman Lavaca.
President.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to item number D, approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Owen, seconded by Councilwoman McGoffin. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. Moving on to item E, the consent agenda, items one through three. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. So we are moving on to a special presentation. This is a recognition of employee service. Tamara Blunt, who is a wonderful employee. She's been wonderful to our community, given to our community. Now if I could have her come forward?
I like the way you were hiding in the back there. I was hiding too. So I felt that there was a letter that Tamara wrote that actually shares about her experience coming on and how things went here for her. And I want to read that because I think it actually exemplifies the kind of extraordinary person and employee that she is and her willingness to reach out, take risks, take new positions. So and she said at this point that if I read it, she won't say anything, but of course we'll not let her get away with that from me. So and I will also, at some point, also have Chief McElroy to come forward and say something too. So this was her retirement, this was her retirement letter to Chief McElroy. She says, "Chief McElroy, when I was hired as a dispatcher for the Cedar Woolley Police Department in 1991, the police department staff was 14 strong, a chief, a deputy chief, a sergeant, a detective, five patrol officers, one records, backslash dispatch supervisor, and four dispatchers plus one day a week, Sundays, animal control officer. What a change. As I leave, we now have a staff of 13 officers, a chief, a lieutenant, two sergeants, two detectives, and a total of 19 sworn officers, a full-time code enforcement officer, three records staff, and a full-time records supervisor. The city hired me when I had no police dispatch experience and I had 10 days of training before my trainer quit unexpectedly, and I was deemed ready to go. Graveyards was my first assignment when I worked. And then Officer Doug Salinger, thank you, who couldn't have been kinder, gave me one of the quotes that I have hung on throughout my career. Nothing he, nothing he was asked to do was ever beneath him, and he would say, quote, 'I get paid the same no matter what I do,' end quote. I have always remembered that when I was in search of someone, watched babies and small children that were taken from abusive parents, driving patrol cars to auctions down south, being a human alarm clock for an officer that was only going to get three hours sleep before shifts, and so many more things that I didn't fit the dispatch or records clerk job description. They really," she puts this in quotes, "'they really hit you with all that other duties assigned.'" Yes, we do. My kids grew up while I worked here, and I always knew that the officers were watching out for them, although I found out later that the officers didn't tell me everything that they had seen. And now their eye, and now they keep their eyes on my grandson. I have always known that my back was being watched, my family was being protected, and I would never have to go through a tragedy alone because through the tragedies of my life, my people have always been there for me. How truly lucky I am to be able to say that. I am so fortunate that I have worked with amazing group of dedicated city personnel in the past exceedingly and exceedingly blessed to work with such stellar people now. It is my only sadness to know that I will not be seeing these people on a daily basis as I set my retirement date for June 30th of this year, 2023." So Friday. Friday. And we're having a last day. Yep. We're having a chili feed. Everybody's in vice. Beer at the department. That's right. So she says sincerely, Tamara Blunt. So we'll have the chief say something that will help you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your service, Tamara. 32 years is a long time. Well deserved. This is probably one of the last things I'll get to make you do because I know you really didn't want to come here and be recognized, but you really do deserve it. And thank you for your service. I'll save the rest for Friday.
I'll read this and then if you would share a few words, we'd be honored. Okay. Sergeant Tamara Blunt, Cedar Woolley Police Department, City of Cedar Woolley, May 1991 to June 2023. On behalf of the citizens of Cedar Woolley, I extend our appreciation for 32 years of dedication, skilled expertise, attention to detail, and commitment to excellent service. With sincere gratitude, Mayor Julia Johnson. But I have to say, you know, this really, all that you have given and how you have helped shape the lives of others, actually, this is, we deserve a whole lot more. Thank you, Tamara. I'm going to have this to you. Thank you very much. Really, my letter said it all. It's, it, it has been such a pleasure and an honor to work with the people I've worked with. When I started in 1991, we didn't have computers and we didn't have cell phones. And now my cellphone is a computer. So I've seen so many changes in the technology, but the people have remained wonderful throughout my career. And I, I'm just privileged to have worked here for so long. We're privileged to have had you. Thank you, Tamara. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We'll give them just a second to... Of course, you all realize they'll be eating cake back there and we won't. You're stuck here with us. Okay. Moving on to city administration report. Charlie?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Counsel, no report this evening.
All right.
Planning down the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember reports. So we'll start with you, Councilwoman Owen.
I don't have much to say, Madam Mayor, but I see Rainier shows showed up in the park. And I've got a lot of comments from the shop owners in town, especially the restaurants that was concerned about the carnival being down in the, in the park. And they, they were asking if some way we can get it back, back up around Cedar Woolley because they're losing a lot of, lot of revenue. So we'll, we'll look at that on down the road. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Councilwoman McGoffin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. And if you haven't seen the festivities, check out the Lager Rodeo website.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
I just have that we had a safety committee meeting. We went over the different needs of the different departments and the levy lid. And that was it.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So yeah, I want to second that, wishing everybody a happy Fourth of July and have a great time with the Lager Rodeo and the parade. It's going to be a lot of fun. One of the people in our neighborhood was mentioning the graveyard. They really enjoy going over there. They enjoy being able to, to visit their loved ones and they go often. So they do appreciate all the care that's being taken into that. And so I want to, want to echo that. And thank you.
All right. Thank you. We can pass that on. We'll pass that on to the Public Works Department. They'll be happy to know that. I'm sure Mark would love to share that with his staff. It's always good when you receive positive reports. So thank you for sharing that. And as always, I just want to extend my appreciation to the Lager Rodeo Committee. They work very hard and they work for many months getting these festivities ready. And, and there's a ton of volunteers and I see some of them sitting here in the audience. And so I want to thank them. Also, a huge thanks to the Lions Club who puts the parade together. And this year, they had an exceptional amount of entries. So about twice as much work, but I have great faith in them because they, they know how to do it and they do it well. And they are also doing a log drive, I guess you would call it, down the river. You can go online and buy tickets. I think they're $5 each. I'm, I have bought one. And you guess how long it's going to take the log to float down the river? So if that's something you'd like to participate in, and it's been years since we've done that. I want to say, I think it's been since the eighties that we've actually done that. So this is something new for us again. Also, I want to extend thanks to the Janikys. They did bring the wood forward today. I don't know if you've been to the parking lot right behind the Woolley Market, but they are setting that up. The wood carvers will begin that very, very soon. And we thank Janiky for doing that. And as always, the PD and Fire Department, they spend many, many hours and lots of their staff really providing crowd control and looking over, making sure that vehicles are where they're supposed to be and not doing something they're not supposed to be doing. They really do an exceptional job. So we knew that this was going to be a full year this year. So I want to thank the Public Works Department. They are also going to step up and assist the PD and the Fire Department with people and crowd control. So it does truly take a village. And I think what we have here are exceptional people, but I also think we're an exceptional community. So I think that's just grand. All right. So I could say a whole lot more, but I'm going to pass, pass on. And we have now a proclamation, item number I. This was brought to us from Councilwoman Lavaca. And he wanted to know if this is something that we could read at the council meeting. And of course, it has to be vetted by everybody, but it has been vetted and we're quite excited about it. It's called a proclamation recognizing the month of July as American Proud. And I think it'll become apparent as I read it. So whereas American Proud recognizes our great American history and the liberty and the freedom for all, and whereas to proclaim and honor the individuals and civic organizations for their support and dedication of what American Proud stands for, and whereas our thanks and support goes out to our local police department, Fire Department, our active duty military, duty military and veterans, and many volunteer groups who continue to support the efforts that recognize American Proud. And whereas we hereby emphasize and support the following events that recognize and demonstrate our support for celebrating American Proud Month, such as the annual Fourth of July Parade, annual fireworks display, and other patriotic activities that honor our veterans, active duty military and their families who have sacrificed to protect our freedom. And whereas the United States of America is the longest-running constitutional public in modern history, still operating under the same U.S. Constitution dating back to 1787. And whereas the first 10 amendments called the Bill of Rights dating back to 1791 created our unique, unique brand of American freedom, and that doesn't exist anywhere else in the world. And whereas it must be celebrated and remembered for us to be able to preserve our unparalleled American freedom. Now, therefore, I, Julia Johnson, Mayor of Cedar Woolley, along with the Cedar Woolley City Council, do hereby recognize the month of July as American Proud Month in the City of Cedar Woolley annually. Signed, Mayor Julia Johnson. So thank you, Nick. Very cool. Okay. Now it's public comment. I'm going to open it up for public comment. It's 6:14. If anybody has anything that they would like to share, please keep it to three minutes, if you will. And, and we need your name and address.
I, I won't take three minutes. My name is Val Mullen from Cedar Woolley. And I'm speaking in favor of the American Proud proclamation. I'm glad to see it went through. And what my approach was for my comments were intended to ask you to vote for it. So it's already been voted for. So I just wanted to thank you for giving appreciation to everyday people, the volunteers, the civic groups that aren't celebrated through their own Veterans Day or Memorial Day, volunteers and civic groups that try to make a difference by attending meetings, writing letters, emails, giving testimony, and participating in civic events. This proclamation will celebrate all volunteers and civic groups, including those who have come to this meeting. And I, to finish my remarks, this resolution celebrates annually our constitutional republic in the month of July, when we also celebrate the founding of our country. American Proud Month will remind us of our American freedoms and those who are protecting it every day. And I hope that this will be something we can celebrate every year. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Roner. I'm an outsider from Anacortes. But I would like to thank you all for the political courage to do this. It's hard to believe that this would be a contentious issue to declare our love of country and to be proud of the country we have, but it is very contentious in other communities. And thank you. Thank you so very much.
Is there anybody else? Anybody on Zoom that may wish to give public comment? Okay. Go ahead, Phil. I don't see anybody.
Philip Murray, 101 West Woodworth. I got several items I'm concerned about. The parklet there in front of the Woolley Market at 829 Metcalf, there's no business there. So this thing does not need to be there, especially during the parade. You have a garbage can parked right in front of it. It becomes a very tight traffic jam area. It needs to go. I have addressed this with the city employees before and no response. I don't believe, last time I checked, there was no permit for it. It wasn't paid. And the other thing was you voted in an electronic charging station at the end of the railroad tracks over here where, where they used to be. That is banked railroad right of way. They can put a rail line through there at any time. It would not make any sense to allow them to build something that may have to come out. And if you have a contract for so long, I'd say the city's going to be in trouble for the bill for that. But it is banked. They can bring that railroad all the way up to concrete anytime. The other one is the senior center parking. You had a meeting there for two days. There was no senior center parking for the senior people trying to get to lunch. They had to park way out there and walk in. These people are handicapped. There's no handicap spots left. You ground all that off. You took the signs out. You're changing it around. You need to try to figure these things out between their lunchtime or something. But there's just, when you have these meetings like the Rotary, they take up a lot of the parking, too. Somehow you should try to move the meetings around or something for their lunch hour. Yeah, the last meeting I was at, there was public comments that were written in. They were not read. And I don't know why you wouldn't read those. I mean, it's, why'd send them in then? If you're not going to read them. The library parking, right there in the handicap spots, you pull in and if you get out, here's the curb a foot away from you. And you're stepping into the garden, which now has been packed by car tires about that deep. It's a fall hazard. Somebody's going to get hurt. And this is handicapped. Poor engineering. I don't know who designed that, but it's ridiculous. And there's several spots like that there. That would be about it, I guess. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
One, one other thing.
Yep.
Friend of mine, Paul, I met down here at the senior center. He's old. He lives on Haynes Avenue. His house sits on a 90-foot wide lot. And he takes up less than 45 feet. He wants to subdivide that into two 45-footers so he could sell the lot and have some money. It's too small. It has to be 6,000 square feet. And there are so many lots around there that are actually 45 feet. And there are some that are 40 feet. It's been, the zoning doesn't allow him to do this. He said, well, he can build a part of ADU there. He doesn't want an ADU. He doesn't want to be a renter. He just wants to have some extra money in his pocket or sell and get out of here. But I mean, it's ridiculous. It's a big lot. He doesn't want to mow it anymore. He can't do it. He has to hire somebody to do it. That needs to be addressed with the city planners and stuff, but it will be to you. And it'd be nice if you could do something for him.
All right. Thank you.
Chuck knows who he is. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Louis Requay. I'm 310 Wes Bennett here in Cedar Woolley. I haven't spoken in front of a city council or planning commission for quite some time, so bear with me. I've been retired now for a little while. But I'm here, and I hope this is a proper time to address this issue on item under new business. I don't know if you're going to let speakers speak at that time, but I can do it now if that's okay.
That's great. Go ahead.
I'm in here in support of Rebecca Lowe as your new community development director. And I'll give you a few examples of why. I had a business here, Skaggett Surveyors and Engineers, for 41 years. And on my staff was a planner named Mary Ann Manville Ailes, who had a master's degree in planning and pretty much knew the GMA process and the GMA update, update process like the back of her hand. And she actually did service for, through, through our business for the city and other municipalities. And one of the reasons why I want, I'm in support of Rebecca is that Rebecca and Mary Ann, as far as I know, are probably the two of the most experienced planners with respect to GMA updates, GMA, you know, compliance and things like that. And I, and in the 41 years, we did actually do some work for some of the municipalities. And if you have a planner on your staff that understands the updates and the, and the process that, that you have to do under GMA, it's extremely important because if you have to hire out to do that, it can bleed, you know, money out of the city coffers quite quickly. It's a, it's a, there's a lot of work to it. I was on the Skaggett County Planning Commission for about six years during the implementation of the Growth Management Act. And I understand fully why it's important to have a planner that understands that process and how you go about dealing with it, especially for annexations and urban growth area boundary changes and all the updates that GMA requires. So I would recommend highly that you bring on Rebecca Lowe. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. It is 6:23. I'm going to close public comment and we will move on to unfinished business, the 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Project. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading tonight for the 2024 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Program for the City of Cedar Woolley. At the June 14th meeting, we had a public hearing on this, this tip and also the first reading for this. And I did a presentation at that time. And I won't repeat myself tonight, but I'll make myself available for any questions you might have. And I would request your action on this tonight, if you're willing to do that, mainly for the selfish reason that I'm going to be on vacation the first meeting in July. And I do need to have this submitted to the Council of Governments by the end of the month of July. So would appreciate your consideration of that for action tonight. And again, the, the tip is required yearly to be updated by each of the cities and counties that participate in, in Washington government. And it requires that we have an adopted tip to be eligible for individual projects for federal and most state funding. So very important process. And again, as I described last time, we have a number of very important arterial projects, which the council has been extremely supportive of. And this tip is, is built largely around that with the other projects that we do as well on, on an annual basis, such as our overlays. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have and, and after that, if you would be willing to act. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, you gave a very extensive program to us last week. So appreciate that. Any questions or comments for Mr. Freiberger?
No. I just want to thank you for all the information that you do provide in the packet and for getting this through. I'll make a motion to approve the 2024 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Process, uh, project.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Allen, to adopt Resolution 112423, which does adopt the 2024-2029 Transportation Improvement Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you.
Moving on to our new business, which is the final acceptance of the 2021 Public Works 02 Wastewater Treatment Laboratory Operations Building, Public Works Building, Faber Construction Corporation. That's a long one, isn't it?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a couple of pages to talk about a very long process, which the council's been vitally involved in for the last several years. As you know, we've been working out of pretty antiquated facilities for all of our public works operations for, for many decades. The 10 hut that the Public Works Operations Crew has been in, and also the pre-1936 solid waste facility. And they're just, they've, they've served us well for many, many decades, but it was time to move on. And you graciously provided the funding and support for the funding to both build the new public works facility and to also using sewer utility funds to build our new laboratory operations building. Faber Construction constructed that project starting in, in October of, of 2020, 2021, and completed this project in the end of 2022, substantially completed it, and have finished doing all of the warranty work and the punch list items. In fact, they were at the plant one last time today to do some window sealing for some leakage we had. They've been very responsive to our request to do this. We had a fairly large number of change orders on this project, but as you know, that was all good because we were attempting to use our money and spread it as, as far as we could to complete the site improvements that were not in the original bid with the funds that, that we had. And so the overall value of the contract, including sales tax, ended up at 6.4 million, basically. And, and we got our money's worth out of the project. Many of you came to the open house or have seen the facility and you know it's, it's a beautiful facility, really. It is meant for function and it will certainly serve the city for many decades to come. And your leadership and support of that has been absolutely critical to that. So I would request of the council, your motion to approve final acceptance of, of Contract 2021 PW02 with Faber Construction Corporation of Linden, Washington, in the amount of $6,384,802.59, which includes sales tax.
Okay. Are there any questions or concerns, comments? What's your pleasure, counsel? Do you want to make a motion? Do you want to make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll put forth that motion.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Diamond, or Kesty, I'm sorry, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Moving on to the authorization to advertise 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Improvement Project. Mr. Freiberger.
Thank you. This is one of the projects that appeared in the tip that was approved last year. This is our pretty annual overlay project on our arterial streets. We actually have two schedules in this particular project. We have an overlay for Cook Road, basically from the west branch or leg of the Cook Ferry Roundabout to the west city limits. That's Schedule A. That's funded primarily by Transportation Improvement Program funding, of $452,000, with city matching funds of 15% or $79,784. Then we also have included in this overlay of a portion of Jamison Street. You'll recall that three years ago, we overlaid Jamison from basically the high school and Third Street area all the way to Township. This particular project will complete the overlay of Jamison from Township out to match with Railroad Avenue. So that project, that part of the project is another $224,000, all from local funds using our transportation benefit district. So requesting your approval for staff to advertise this project for bids, the 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Improvements Project. We plan to advertise that on July 5th and close bids on July 19th. And then the construction will occur in August. We have a 20-day, 20-working-day construction schedule for this. Fairly quick. We'll have that done, all things going well, anyway, before school opens up again in the fall and have that project finished and Cook Road back up to snuff. So would request your action tonight to authorize Public Works to advertise for bids for the 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Improvements Project. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Freiberger?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for putting this together. One of the questions I had was, when we're doing the construction, that's a pretty main arterial out to the freeway. What's our mitigation plan for all that traffic?
So the specifications call for the contractor to maintain one lane of access at all times. So there will be traffic delays. The actual overlay work shouldn't take more than a day on Cook Road, maybe two. I don't know the exact tonnage on that. Didn't bring that figure with me. So that part will not take all that long to do. It's possible to do these work projects at night, but it causes a substantial additional cost. And we've elected to build it in the daytime with one lane staying open. And we should be able to do that and get it done and over with. We'll have public notices out on the potential delays that will happen with this. And the contractor will very likely time the project between the peak hours to minimize the delays as much as possible.
Anyone else? Yes, Councilman Allen, do you have? Okay. I thought I saw your button on, sorry. Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right, that was quick, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Owens, seconded by Councilman Allen, to authorize Public Works to advertise for bids for the 2023 Pavement and Pedestrian Improvement Project. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, council.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. Okay, moving on to the, let's see, Resolution 112623, the Polty Road BLA annexation request. So, thank you, Nicole.
Good afternoon. So in 2021, the city received a request from Ms. Marietta Polis, the owner of 1035 Polty Road, for assistance with adjusting the city limit line so that her property is not partially in the city and partially in the county. The neighboring property to the north, 1033 Polty Road, also is partially in the city, partially in the county. Because the city limit line bisects these two properties, each property has two separate parcel numbers, which causes confusion. The owners of both properties have submitted a notice of intent to commence annexation to resolve this situation. So back October 27 of 2021, former planning director John Coleman presented the request to you guys. And the council did make a motion to allow this annexation process to proceed. So the memo sent to you guys includes the draft resolution in Attachment 1, which includes a map that shows the proposed corrected city limit line, just to incorporate the extent of the properties into the city limits. This isn't the first time that the city has undergone a special annexation process to correct the boundary line error. We had corrected the city limit line in a similar way in 2008 for seven properties adjacent to the properties in the current request. And based on research and discussion with the county GIS department, the error appears to be an anomaly that resulted from an incorrect legal description related to an earlier annexation or land use action. So under RCW 3513340, the state law does provide a simple administrative solution to correct boundary line errors like this that bisect properties with partial in the city, partial in the county, without the need for review by the Skagit County Boundary Review Board. So my recommendation tonight is for city council to pass Resolution 112623 to authorize this boundary adjustment. Once the resolution gets passed by council, the resolution does get forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for a similar resolution. And once the county passes their resolution, the boundary will be corrected. The parcels will be entirely within city limits and assigned the R7 residential land use classification that's already assigned to the portions of the property that are already within city limits. I can take any questions if you have any.
Pretty straightforward, really.
Yeah, simple.
Are there any questions or comments? Any concerns? If not, do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 112623.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Excellent, most carries. Thank you, Nicole. All right, moving on to our last new business item tonight, and that is the confirmation of our appointment of our new community development director, Rebecca Lowell.
Good evening, council. Mayor, Charlie Bush, city administrator, here to present Rebecca Lowell. I'd like to start with giving some background on the process that we've gone through to get to this point. John Coleman, our prior community development director, left the city in late April. And we posted this position right around the time that he left, on April 28, to be exact. We posted it open until filled, which isn't uncommon. And that allows us to vet applicants as they apply, as opposed to waiting for some period of time before we look at all the applications. We had Ms. Lowell in for interviews on the 10th of May. Three panels interviewed her. The first panel was the mayor and myself. The second panel was all the department staff in addition to some of the Public Works support staff in the office. And the third panel was all of our directors with our planning commission chair as well. She fell two points short of a perfect interview when you combine the scores of all three panels. So she did extremely well. And shortly after that, within a day or so, the mayor offered her the position. We did reference checks. And that brought us to the position of bringing her to council for confirmation. We were looking to do that a few weeks ago. We got feedback from the council that you wanted to slow down the process. And so we did that. And the result was we had council interviews, either with one person or small groups of council members in the last few weeks. And she also had a meeting with developers last Friday. And tonight she had a public reception. And that really brings us here tonight to confirmation with the council. And in order for the mayor to hire this position for a director with an employment agreement, the council needs to confirm her and vote on that. It's what we've done with all the folks, myself included, in those roles. So with that, I would personally welcome the opportunity to work with her. She scored really well. We know she's a good fit within our organization. She's highly qualified. She's going to talk more about her qualifications and be available for questions here momentarily. But she's highly qualified. And she is, has a lot of skills and a lot of experience in the areas that we have coming forward towards us, updating our comprehensive plan, dealing with development, dealing with new Growth Management Act and state law regulations that are coming our way. So really excited to present Rebecca Lowell. And I'll step away from the podium. And Rebecca, come on up and tell the council some more.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor and city council. It is a, it's a pleasure to be here before you this evening. I had to write down a few bullet points to make sure I didn't forget anything. Although I'm used to talking about projects and topics, talking about myself, I found getting ready for this has been a little bit more difficult. But having been able to interview with some of you, some of you are aware that I did, I grew up here in Skagit County. I attended Burlington-Nettison High School, went to Western Washington University. And although I currently live in Burlington, my husband and I have plans to move into Cedar Wully in the coming future. We won't be inside the incorporated city limits, but nonetheless, we will be in Cedar Wully. And we're so excited to make that transition. Here with me tonight, my husband, David Lowell, is here. Some of you may know him. He had an office here in Cedar Wully for a number of years, as well as a number of colleagues and friends, fast directors, Pat Hayden. So nice to have Louis Requay come and say a few words and some of the department staff that is here as well. It's been really wonderful getting to know all of them and you as well. So I have been a land use planner for over 20 years. I have a degree in planning and environmental policy. But more importantly, I would say, is the experience that I've had actually being a planner. I was, started my career in the private sector, where I spent five years working for an engineering and surveying firm named Leonard Budno and Scoji. Some of you may remember the, remember that firm before I accepted a job at the city of Mount Vernon, where I've been for the last 18 years. I've been really lucky in my career that I haven't been pigeonholed into what we call long-range planning, which is generally your comp plan updates, or current planning, which would be like your subdivisions. Mount Vernon is a small enough community that I've really had to master both, which I think is really great for any planner, to be able to work in both sides. In some really large organizations, you end up just being able to work in one specialty or the other. I've never applied for a job as a director, never thought I wanted to, until I learned about this job, was able to reach out. And then after meeting the mayor, city administrator, your staff here, and then being able to meet all of you, the more I learned, the more convinced I was that I really did want to come here and be part of this community and work here as well. As you all know, Cedar Wully is a special place. And it's, like I said, the place that I want to be. This is the place that I will retire. My husband and I were actually moving to my family's farm. So it really is, it's something that, I'm not here for a job. I'm here because I want to be part of this community. As mentioned briefly before, you do have a, all cities do, and Skagit County have a comprehensive plan update that, of course, the state requires you be substantially completed by 2025, which right now seems like you've got a lot of time. But it goes by so quick. And having been through that process a few times now in my career, I can tell you that it is daunting. But if I am selected, I'm looking forward to jumping in and learning more about your vision for your city, your hometown values, the way that you want to see this community grow. I'm looking forward to being able to not only reach out to the planning commission, of course, city council, your school district, your local builders and developers, other interest groups, and then, of course, the public that we all would serve. So with that, again, it's been a privilege. I hope I'm selected, that you confirm my appointment tonight. But at the very least, it's been nice to, nice to be here, nice to get to know all of you. Hopefully, I'll get to work with you soon. And with that, I'm happy to answer. Do you want me to just stay at the podium? Would that work? Any questions anyone might have?
Do we have any questions for Ms. Lowell? I just want to share a few words. So we, and I too wrote it down because I wanted to make sure that I covered, because I am so impressed with you, Rebecca. So, yeah, we did, working with our staff, we followed the protocol and procedure that we needed to, to meet with you. You, we put you through the wringer. You had three different interviews. I wanted, I just tried to add it up. I think it was 20 people in all that you had, then plus the council on top of that. So you were a real trooper going through the interview process with us. I appreciate the fact that you've shared more about what you have done because you are very qualified, which actually came out in the interview process. You are very qualified for what we're looking for. As Louis Requay said, it's the, not only is the comprehensive plan a very comprehensive and difficult, challenging process to do, but we've added the GMA on top of it. The legislature has made some huge changes. And we do need somebody who's going to be able to do that. And you obviously are qualified to do that as well. So I appreciate that. Like I said, we find ourselves in a critical situation. And I am really hoping that the council will also come to appreciate and acknowledge you as our new, I say planning commission, but I see that it's actually been changed to community development director. So I guess we've thrown a wrench in there. So, okay, with that.
I just wanted to say thank you, too, for applying and having the patience to go through the extra interviews with us and have those discussions. It's been an honor getting to get to know you better. And I'm happy to hear that you moved into your farm. And regardless of the outcome, you know, it's exciting to have you as part of the community, too. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? If not, we are, I'm looking for a motion then, a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to approve? We have to have a motion. So if there is an emotion, is there a motion to deny?
I'll put forth the motion to deny. I think you're wonderful. But if I may, just for a second, with our policy, the first three interviews probably should have involved the representatives of the city. So that would have been council members, probably two at that. And then a good fill. And I feel that that policy has let you down because we've gone through all this and you're here where you could have got a fill or the executive branch could have got a fill for how that would have gone. And we would have looked at other applicants. Being that we just looked at one, I don't feel comfortable in making that decision. And we didn't get interviews until after it was known that we were uncomfortable about not really being involved. So that's why I would put forth the motion to deny. I thank you for all your time, and I thank you for being so willing.
McGoffin?
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, a seconded by Councilman McGoffin. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Or I should say, yes, opposed, same sign. All right, Rebecca, I'm sorry. Thank you for coming here tonight. Thank you for going through the process with us. All right, with that, we have a executive session meeting. We will be going into executive session for a legal counsel pending litigation pursuant to RCW 423110I. It's a potential action to follow. So we will be back in about, how much time do you think we need, Nikki?
About 15 minutes to start.
Okay, perfect. We'll be out for 15 minutes and then back. Thank you. Okay, at 7:01, I am calling this City Council meeting back to order. We are coming out of executive session. Is there a motion? I wrote it down for you.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city attorney for RCW 496041.
All right. Second it, okay. So we have a motion by Councilman McGoffin. Motion by Councilman McGoffin, seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. That is it. That ends our City Council meeting tonight. The next meeting is, when is it? July 12th, okay. All right, thank you everyone, have a good night.